Work session, an executive session for personnel matters and a special meeting for action. I would like to welcome all, and thank you for being here. Personnel matters and a special meeting for action. All the board members are not present. Work session, an executive session for personnel matters. Is to receive operational reports of board members. Like a work session, executive session for being here. Personnel for received athletic reports of board members. Like a work session, executive session for being here. Personnel for received athletic reports of board members. Like a work session, executive session for being here. Personnel for received athletic reports of board members. Like a work session, executive session for being here. Athletic reports of board members. Like a work session, executive session for being here. Athletic reports of board members. Like a work session, you, the executive. So, we are the program director. We're the board members. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. We're the board members. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. We're the board members. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. We're the board members. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. We're the board members. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. This is discussion. Uh, work session, you, the executive. This is, uh, so, we are the program director. System, it saves about a minute and a half probably. We don't have to go through the script that the nine one one operator has to take us through. A long time ago, Chief Gates, who just retired in January, and enjoyed surfing almost, always said that our motto with everything is just all of us together, just do what's right for the patient. And that's kind of what we follow as well. They expect us to have the situation under control if we call them in, period. So, that puts a lot of pressure on these guys. So, our concussion team not only has athletic trainers, we have physical therapists, and of course, our physicians. And here again, we work at market speed with the concussion program. And which means, if you translate that out just a little bit, the same treatment strategies, the strategies for managing concussion in general are the same as the Cleveland Clinic, University of Pittsburgh Medical Center, UCLA Medical Center. So, we're doing a lot of the same stuff that they're doing, that it's all done right here in Pocatello. The program we use for our neurocognitive testing is iPad-based, and it's called C three Logix with an X, not a C at the end. We got in on that program on the ground floor about eight or nine years ago. We essentially established their database to give a base for their normative data in terms of what, how they, you put a student in there based on age, male, female, and a lot of the history that's in there, then it gives you normative data at the bottom of their test and where they stand with all of the other people. So, we dumped in a very short time thousands of baseline tests for them to use. And now, that's from our side of it. The other side of the team, when we talk about the whole team of concussion, then falls into the lap of the school district. And we have a very great working relationship with all of the teachers, the administration in each of the buildings. So, these athletic trainers can go talk to anybody, their teachers, whatever, besides their parents, on how to manage. When we first started, when concussion started to change in terms and evolve to the modern day techniques that we now do use, one, we've come a long way, but they always would say it takes a village to manage a concussion patient. And so, not only is it the parents, not only is it the athletic trainers, our team on the concussion side, but it's all administrators and the teachers that all have to modify in order to help get this particular athlete better. And so, we've got it dialed in, I think, pretty well. Once in a while, there's a hiccup here and there, but the folks out in the schools do a great job making sure that it's all done. And just as an example, the typical timeframe for the average high school athlete to recover from a concussion minimum is four weeks. It takes four to six weeks on average. The younger they are, the longer they take. So many things come into play, whether they're ADD, ADHD, have anxiety, depression, migraine history, concussion history, all come into play in terms of how it's going to set the recovery path for that individual. So, it's very complicated. So, typically, when these guys out in the schools get a concussion, they refer into the clinic with me and Dr. Joseph. Our initial eval, which is a shock to a lot of people, those patients are with us for about an hour and a half to two hours to get through all of the evaluative process. So, there was some people that are, whoa, this is past fifteen minutes, what's going on here? There's no end in sight. So, yeah, bring the lunch. So, in a second here, Britt's going to go over all of our numbers that we have for the first two seasons, that's fall and winter. And this year, we supervised eighty-three concussions in District twenty-five, that's fall and winter. And that's about par for the course. We just, my wife does the research through ISU, has all of the IHSA numbers. They're in, since we started keeping track of all of this stuff, I think it's nine years, there are about nine thousand concussions have been reported throughout the state. And each one of those, of course, are broke down by sport, male or female, and we're right on par in terms of one in, one in five people will have a concussion in football. We just know that's going to be a standard. So, we're right on course. But the nice thing is, a lot of the coaches in this school district have done a very good job updating all of their helmets, and so they're more modern, and they do provide a little bit better protection, okay? So, that's awesome. So, our sports medicine department also has a very robust community program. So, if you take this week, just last week, with the school district, besides the practices and the start of district play, we also had three days of a soccer tournament over the weekend, which we covered in the snow. And then, then we're going to have a robust district competition all of this week. And if anybody's lucky enough to stretch their season into Saturday to have a play-in game, then these guys will, most of these guys will be, that will be their fourteenth day straight. So, that's how that goes. When we first started this in two thousand and fourteen, our community, the days we spent with community events was between forty and sixty. And this last year, we were at a hundred and forty-six days in the community side of things. So, depending on the year and what sports we do, we have, we supervise anywhere between eighteen to thirty-six thousand athletes a year, just in the community side. Not to mention what we have in the school district. So, that adds for that number. Okay, so Britt has?
Okay, so the program numbers that I'm going to go over, like he said, just from our fall and our winter sports. So, at about three weeks, we'll probably have our spring numbers, but we're in district play, we'll go through states. We're kind of waiting for those numbers still to come in. The, the total number of athletes that we treated was one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. We were onsite at our schools for five hundred and eight days, so across the three high schools. And then we covered five hundred and seventy-one events in the fall and the winter. And that averages for ATs, it's kind of different with some busy weeks and some less busy weeks, but it's about thirty-five hours. And there are some weeks that we do hit about sixty hours of coverage in the schools. Just depending what's going on, if events are on a Saturday. We have multiple events sometimes on a Saturday, which takes up our whole day. So, that does play a role into those busier weeks. And so, our total athlete contact, so an athlete contact is any time that we're having contact with an athlete, whether it's an evaluation, we're doing a rehab program, we're taping them for practices, we're doing recovery after practices, we're icing them down. All of the stuff in between was thirteen thousand two hundred and forty-five contacts. That's about thirty-eight contacts a day. So, there are some days that number's pretty, feels like it's daunting, but we just kind of go through our seasons and try to do what we can for all of them. And it's nice with Portnife, because I actually did start in two thousand and fifteen, and there was, it was just me. And so, now that there's two, it actually does make a big difference. And I've like seen it, like all of our reports. We're able to help more kids. We're able to provide better care for them because it's not just one person. So, that's really helpful. Brent went over the concussion numbers, we had eighty-three, and then medical referrals is three hundred and twelve. So, medical referrals is to really anything. It's whether it's an urgent care, whether we're going to a specialist, the ER, we're just tracking wherever we're having to send them for higher care. PT, chiropractic appointments, all those kinds of things. So, that's what that number includes. And then surgeries, we had nineteen this year. And then we were lucky so far to have zero ambulance transports.
One more week to go.
I know, I'm like, uh.
That's, that'll be a first, I think.
Yeah, I think that's a first, since I've been here for sure. Yeah.
And, you know, in certain days of the season, whether it was either the fall or the winter sport seasons, I know Highland had, they were seeing at least for, because you have a, it's always about the third or fourth week of the football season or the fall sports, you're just inundated with bodies. And it was more common to have fifty people a day that they would take care of. That was true for there and Sentry. Polk was down a little bit, they, well, it was about ten behind what the other two schools were. So, that's pretty amazing. And I was, I always look at how many people go through the emergency room on an annual basis, and it's like thirty, forty, fifty thousand, somewhere in there, I think. Don't quote me on that one. And I'm going, well, wait a minute, if we start adding this, uh, whoa. Then I went to the ER director, said, I think we have more patients than you do. Do you have any questions or thoughts?
I do. I always do. So, question on how things are paid for. Is that, and the only reason I'm asking is my daughter, at the end of basketball season, we got a thousand dollar bill. And so, I'm curious how things get reported. And, and you mentioned physical therapy as part of the medical referral, so that might answer my question.
That's just if we refer out to a physical therapist. So, all the services we provide are free. So, we never charge any of our athletes for any treatment. Or anything that we're doing in our athletic training room is never to a charge for the athlete. It's always free.
Interesting.
So, that includes all of their salaries?
This bill that I got was for physical therapy, so is that considered the medical?
That would be, if we had to refer them out for more help, yeah.
And did the, the athlete and/or the parents know that that was going to be the case? Because I didn't. Do we let the parents and/or?
Well, I mean, a lot depends on when you first checked into physical therapy, give all the insurance info and all that type of stuff, then, then that's just the way it is.
That's, okay. I'm just, I guess, you know, we, we took care of it. I'm just wondering if other parents are aware, if there are going to be charges eventually, how would they have been informed of that? And is that, I mean, I guess when we signed up for the sport, you had to provide your insurance information. I'm just curious as to how, because I sure wasn't expecting that. How would they have known? If something was being referred out, and obviously, my athlete was taken and referred, but I don't recall ever being told that that was being hap, going to happen. And again, I may be a unique case, but I'm just curious for other parents.
That's probably the first time I've been asked that.
Oh, there you go.
So, you said unique, so I go, well, I'll help you out with that one.
So, you, you didn't take her?
I didn't take her, no.
Oh.
I didn't take her.
That's interesting, I didn't realize.
She was signed up and appointments were made for her, and she went and we got the bill. So, I just wasn't sure.
Typically isn't the case. Typically, they have a conversation with the parent and
Before anything happens.
This is our recommendation, if you will, referral process.
So, yeah, like if I had a parent at Sentry that I wanted to refer out for PT or to refer out, then that's usually what I would do. Or I would tell the, like, the kid, like, hey, do you want to be seen elsewhere? Like, talk with your parents, let them know, can I have their phone number? And so, a lot of kids sometimes are like, no.
They don't tell their parents.
Yeah, they're like, I don't want to like talk with, but our, like, services that we have aren't charged out.
Okay.
And that's you, and so I've nev, I've never personally, like, set up an appointment unless, like, I've, the only time if I'm referring, then I'm like, hey, I'll, I can get ahold of the office for you, but they'll call you and confirm.
Okay.
So, I've, I've haven't had that before.
It's kind of like if you went to, you know, the dock in the box, and they said, okay, you probably should get physical therapy. This, you don't have to go to the doctor, they can actually connect you, if you will, but then that's a disconnect after that. So, whatever they're doing in physical therapy, they can supplement in the sense of, we can help with it. But, yeah, that's the first time I've ever heard of they went without you talking to the physical therapist.
So, I guess I'm just suggesting maybe we make sure that that
Yeah.
is communicated all the way around.
Absolutely. Well, the conversation with the parents is typically what happens, not just usually through the kids, so.
Yeah, and you know, at some other time, you share information with Tanya, who can then get it to me, and then we can kind of research.
We're graduating in a month, a few weeks, no more kids in sports, so.
We definitely don't want it to happen again.
For future, yeah, yeah.
You're still, you're in survival mode the first month of May.
Now, this is great.
Yeah. The, the other thing to consider too, is a lot of the services that we provide, the, the prehab, if you want to think of that, is maintaining, making sure that their muscular balance is correct, figuring out, they figure all of that out, you know? So, you know, a lot of times, that with the rehab, the services, the STEM, ultrasound, stretching, on and on and on, all of those services, if they were to be billed out, what happens are, their work provided to the athletes. We've calculated it out before, it's anywhere, every year about, of services is about two to two point five million dollars worth of services that's put back into the kids at no charge. So, because if you had to do everything that we do in the schools, then that would be falling on your shoulders.
Yeah.
You know, part of all this too, is just really Portnife's commitment to the community. This is the part, their part about giving back to the community, and that's how the agreement has all been devised and will hold true to it.
That's great. Thank you.
I'd like to know more about that incident though, just so we don't run into that.
Yeah, no, I can show you the bill.
Well, we certainly appreciate all you do. I know that's a big task for all of you, and you certainly put in a lot of hours, which is certainly appreciated, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Of course, a great working relationship with Tanya and Doug, everybody here. So, everybody's just one big team.
And I think, you know, the service provided to the athletes, not only with the, the trainers, we're, we're putting on pre-physicals last night and tonight, we're up there till about seven. There was a lot of different things that we really provide for the athletes that's pretty unique and profound with Portnife, so we really appreciate everything they do for us.
I think we're the only one that gives the physicals and the method that we do. Every other place across the state, hospital-based, clinic-based, or whatever, there's always a minimal charge for the physicals that the athletes have to pay, parents have to pay. So, it's all good.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a good rest of the meeting.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, be right up there.
Okay, next we will review the athletic gate fee charge provided by Tanya Wilkes.
Good afternoon or good evening, what do we want to say here? Four o'clock, right? I'd like to present an athletic gate fee change for next year with the up increase in officials. It went from sixty-seven to eighty dollars per, per event. That's a big percentage increase. And then game management piece, shot clock did get approved from IHSAA, so we're putting up shot clocks, so we have to have actually more game management, paying people to actually run those at each of the facilities. So, with those increases, we don't like to do something without reaching out to community members. You know, we go to one event and get charged something different than the other event. We all like to be on the same page. So, Idaho Falls, District Six, has increased their fees to the same exact prices. We usually go kind, you know, side by side in the sense that that's who we normally compete with. Boise District did go up two dollars. We didn't feel like that need at this moment. There is a savings in that we will be having outdoor football games, so that increase from that Holt Arena ticket price is actually lower with this new gate fee as well. We always like to offer a family pass and then faculty cards and so forth to benefit teachers and those that actually do work behind the scenes. And then family pass, if, you know, we have multi-families where you have more than one child participating or more than, you know, like my child that did three sports, it gets quite expensive. So, we, what we did was we averaged, you know, if they were in a basketball or volleyball team, ten home matches. We multiplied that with the two adults and two kids, and that was the average price, about two fifty. So, any more kids, we added four. And any other events that they would want to go to would be free. So, that family pass is quite the bargain if you do have multiple family members. Senior citizen pass, we did up the age from fifty-five to sixty, and partially because I'm hitting that fifty-five, just kidding. Senior citizen pass, um, we did up the age from fifty-five to sixty, and partially because I'm hitting that fifty-five, just kidding. It is still free. We just wanted to, you know, do a little bit better service. It used to be just a paper card, so actually, we're gonna provide a, a card with their picture on it and so forth. A little more official, that will get them to any, um, Pocatello School District Twenty-Five events, not away, but home events. And we really like to see them out, so we wanna make sure that we will advertise that and get some of those out there. And the student activity card, the only school district that has multiple schools in the district, um, that allows the kids to use those activity cards at all three schools. So if I was a Skyline student, went to a Hillcrest game, I would get charged. And in Pocatello School District, we want the kids to come out and support each other, and so we are not gonna charge if they have an activity card at any of the home events. Um, they are free to come in.
That activity charge, that's been fifty for a while.
It has been, and they, you know, they, of course, always want to talk about increases.
I'm not asking you to raise that.
And I want to keep that there.
Yeah, I think that's great.
And truly, that's about half the price, like surrounding, and depending on what areas. Go ahead.
Yes, I read, when I was reading through this, the ol- the only thing, I was really wishing that the family pass was the same, whether it was one parent or two parents. Because it's a hundred dollars more if both parents come. Um, you know, it's a hundred, two fifty if it's two parents and one fif- one twenty. It's half the price. And the other, so I was hoping that we could have the family price the same for both parents to come. That, but the other suggestion to-
Let's stop for a second, cause I'm lost. What do you mean, both parents? So, two fifty would be two parents?
So the family pass with two adults is two fifty.
Right.
And then family pass with one adult is one twenty-five.
Correct. So that was, the reason we did the one adult is single parents? Is that what you're talking about?
Uh-huh.
And so you're like wanting to see it be what?
Oh, well, I was just thinking it would be nice to have the family pass the same, whether it was two parents or one. Oh, are you hearing that?
We actually visualized some people. Uh, you got a single mom, two kids in athletics, we wanna give her just as much as a price benefit as if there was two parents in the household.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, I totally get that.
Unfortunately, a percentage is pretty high with one parent in the household.
Yeah.
So we wanted to show that reflection.
Oh, yes. And the other thing I just thought of is that both parents probably have to purchase separately, so then it ends up being double. Right?
Mm-hmm.
If the dad buys the single parent, the mom buys the single parent, it's the same price.
Thank you.
Okay, so that clarified for me, and thank you.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea. Um, the other, uh, the other question I had was, um, do middle schoolers, I mean, I guess they've always had to pay? But, um.
The activity card at the middle school level is pretty low.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So right now, the activity card at the middle school is fifteen dollars, I believe. And it hasn't been raised in years. And truthfully, we need to probably think about that in the next couple of years. And that pays for dances, um, any activities, all activities, assemblies, officials.
Okay, yeah, that's understandable. One other thing, I'm sorry, question, um, is on the family pass, how do you let, um, parents know that maybe they wanna get a family pass instead of paying for activity cards? So maybe at one point, I had four at Highland, so maybe instead of buying more activity cards, we could do the family. Is that a possibility? Can you do that?
Yeah, but again, the activity cards go past athletics as well. But you have that, when you go back in the fall and do that walk-through and, and purchase what you want to and so forth, that family pass will be advertised.
Oh, okay. So they know if they wanna do that. Okay.
So maybe kind of leading on to your question, there's not just an adult-only pass. So it's
A family pass?
So the family pass, you're not really counting the kids necessarily. It's, that's your-
Your high schoolers would be included in the family pass?
No, it's fourteen and under.
Fourteen and under.
Fourteen and under.
Oh, they aren't even-
But in your example of two single parents, why would both parents need children passes?
They would just need adult passes.
Right.
Right. And then, but it would be the same price, like, as if you got-
Correct. So, like, if you looked at it, and we looked at it from kind of a, you know, basketball ten home game kinda standpoint, um, if you looked at it that, it's about seventy plus for an adult for each one. And then, so it's about a hundred and forty for two adults, and then for two kids, added on, it's about two forty. So for two adults and two kids, that family pass really isn't gonna save you a lot unless you go to other events. Now, this will get you into football games. This will get you into, if you wanted to go, you know, support your neighbors, or if you had another athlete. So if you went to all the boys' home games and all the girls' home games, this absolutely gonna benefit you no matter what.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. We literally looked at Idaho Falls and they had twenty different options, and it really got confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and difficult to maintain. That's why we're really looking forward to having the cards with their picture on it and their name and so forth. Because unfortunately, a paper card, if you guys, you know, if anything's in your wallet, it gets wrinkled and met. Yeah, so we're really trying to, you know, honor that they're paying for something, they get the card, and that will be identified. And truthfully, the family pass hasn't been offered as district-wide, and, and this will be a first, so this is gonna be awesome.
Yeah, I like it.
Is there an option for if they lose a card?
You can come talk to me anytime. Absolutely. And this will all be documented and numbered. The cards will be documented and numbered. And that was another reason to, you know, unfortunately, you know, we had some, some people from Idaho Falls come to town and, and try to get passes and so forth. We just wanna make sure that we're giving back to our community. We want them there, we wanna support them. Um, but also, we wanna be able to hold our function, so, I mean, you know, balancing that act.
Cool.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next we have Rhonda Nats, Naff, and Sue Pettit will provide career technology education update.
You're good.
Well, hello. It's nice to see you. Thank you for giving me some time today to talk about CTE. I'm very enthusiastic about CTE, and, um, I always tell people, the world of CTE is a great place to live. Thank you. Oh, thank you. So I believe you do have this slideshow, and it is long, there's lots of slides, but I'm a fast talker, so, here we go. The first thing I'd like you to know, and, and I'm, I'm taking this from the stance that, you know, maybe you have some knowledge of CTE, but mostly I want to explain what amazing programs we have in this district for kids, and that, you know, that hopefully they're all taking advantage of this. So the first thing is, is that all CTE teachers are Idaho certified, okay? They are teachers, just like everyone else. Some came through a traditional education background through the College of Ed. Some came through industry, where they had a entire career, and now they're teaching for us. And so, but they are certified, they go through the same renewal process and everything, so, so that's where we are. There are three kinds of pathways, or three kinds of circles, I'm gonna say. There are CTE programs, there are CTE pathways, and then there's the CTS school, the Career Technical School. So the first one, the programs, this is, these are the programs that we have at New Horizon. And they are for students that, um, we want to give them an experience, they want, we want to be able to give them an exposure to something. But by nature of New Horizon's structure, students are kind of in and out of that school. And so they may not have time to complete an entire pathway. And so these are classes, there are three or more classes in a, in a cluster, but they don't necessarily lead to a culmination capstone class. So we offer agriculture, business, and family consumer science at New Horizon. Then we have pathways, and pathways start with an introduction class. They have intermediate classes in the middle, and then they end with a capstone. So it's a start-to-end idea that they can go through during those four years of high school. And if you're in a pathway, then at the, in the capstone, a student will take a technical skills assessment to evaluate what is their level of, of accomplishment. And that's, we're in the process of doing that right now, this week. Um, they also have the opportunity to learn, to earn an industry certificate, and they have dual opportunity, dual credit opportunities, okay? So that's a pathway. And then we go to the Career Technical School, and our, our school is called Gateway Professional Technical. And it's a virtual school run within the three comprehensive high schools. They have all the components of a pathway, plus, um, they have industry work experiences. And this is the highest level of rigor that we offer students. And it is open to all students in School District Twenty-Five. And just as a little side note, we do allow students from surrounding districts to come to our programs if they do not have that program in their own district. For example, we have quite a few students, and I say quite a few, three or four, students from Marsh Valley that come in for our Health Professions programs, because they do not, they don't offer that. We will not allow any of their business students to come to us, because they offer business in Marsh Valley. So, um, and this is supported through CTS funding. And so now we get to go to the fun part here. So here's all the programs that we have. Um, we have a lot. Our first one is in agriculture. There are six program areas at the state, and agriculture is one of them. And we offer an incredible vet tech program. This one is located at Highland. I put these little, this, these are comprehensive slides for you to review at your leisure. Um, but I put in the pathways and some pictures, and if there's dual credit, or if there's an industry certificate available, so that you can go back and look at this later. But, uh, we right now have three students interning at three separate veterinary hospitals, and they're doing great. Those vets love them. I'm excited to have more students come in. That's always a plus for us. Our second agriculture program is our Ecology Natural Resources. And unfortunately, you probably really can't see, but that room is spectacular. It is visually stimulating, kids are excited. Um, the teacher came from Industry, State Game and Fish. And he is, you know, he's really opening up some areas that we weren't able to, to give students that opportunity before. We have a lot of business classes, they're in all three high schools. Um, our Academy of Finance is actually located at Highland, and it's the highest level of, of business classes that we offer. And they are actually part of the National Academy Foundation. So they get, um, national certificates when they complete this program. We also have applied accounting, that's dual credit right now. We have at, at Century, we have programming, cybersecurity, and our new program that we're, we're going into next year, that will, it'd be our planning year, is cloud computing. And I had to kind of figure out what cloud computing was, but it's basically that you are accessing servers virtually all over the world, and you're using their, their server power to either store data, manage data, analyze data. But it's not on a physical, it's not on a physical server like we have here at the school district, or on your personal computer. We're partnering with ISU, who is being sponsored by Amazon to do this. And so our students will be able to get cloud computing certificate number one. And they would actually be able to leave high school with that and go get a job that pays very well.
That's cool.
Um, we have digital communications in all three schools, and this is where the majority of our business students at this level get the Microsoft Office certifications. And we, we do hundreds of these every year. Uh, we're very lucky, the state pays for all of those for us. We don't have to pay for any of these. We have an engineering program at, uh, it's located at Poki, and they do some amazing things over there with, um, 3D modeling and, um, and they have an incredible engraver that's, I, I think is running twenty-four hours a day over there, not really, but it's, they engrave a lot of things. Um, but it's really, this program is really where you get to conceptualize an idea using AutoCAD, and then build whatever that is, to see if that's going to work. And, you know, part of CTE is exploration. It's helping students see what, you know, maybe they think they wanna be an engineer, but then they get in there and say, yeah, no, this is not for me. And that's still a win for us, because we don't want people doing, you know, something for the rest of their life they hate. We have a first responders program, and that is located over in Poki High's campus in the ITB building, which is the Industrial Technology Building. I don't know why we still call it ITB, but we do. And, uh, this is our EMT program. These students are able to sit for these certifications after they graduate. So they, we can't give them, them before for the EMT portion, so they do come out with CPR and AED certifications prior. But you have to be eighteen and have graduated before you can sit. They thought this was a hilarious picture with Pat the Mannequin, uh, their class mascot. So Pat got in the picture this year. Here's our firefighting program, and they get all of these certifications, and these are a two-hour block all year long. And students can take firefighting one, for example, in their junior year, and then their senior year they finish. But what we have found is that students who wanna be in first responders, the majority of them take this two-hour block all year, their junior year, and then in their senior year, they go to EMT. They, this is where they want to be. Um, and our third first responder program is law enforcement. And we have several students now who are working in law enforcement. We have, jailers can be eighteen. And so some of them go out and they work at the jail as a jailer. Um, some go to ISU and become security. There's a lot of companies in this community that need security, but don't need people who have firearms on them. They just need security. And so our, our students, you can't be a, a police officer or get into post until you're twenty. So we try really hard to help these kids figure out what they're gonna do between graduation and the time they can get into post. Because we don't want them to maybe lose interest or be discouraged that they have to wait that, that span of time. So there's a built-in plan for them. Um, culinary arts, this will be a new program that we're opening at Poki. And, uh, the teacher here is a certified chef. He is culinary trained. And Jesse Smith.
Oh.
And he's super excited about it. Uh, kids are also excited. Those numbers are, they're, they're going right up. I was worried about, could we offer the first class? That's not a problem. Then we have early childhood professions at, uh, Highland, which will also now in, in, that same teacher will also take on the educational assistant program. Early childhood is kindergarten through third grade, and education assistant is fourth and fifth grade. So now kids can work in, in any, any level of the elementaries. And another new program we're offering at, next year will be at Century, we're gonna reopen. We did have this program years ago, and when that teacher, uh, retired, we, we lost it, because, you know, you really have to find, these are very teacher-driven. You have to find somebody who this is their passion, and so we have someone like that, and we will reopen our fashion and textiles program for not only designing and manufacturing, but also the retail side of that. So that'll give those students a, a great opportunity for a job.
And you also get an industry certification for that as well?
So right now, I don't know, because this is brand new. We don't have anybody in there yet, but I'm, I'm hoping yes. I mean, I, I don't know what there really is out there yet. That, that's what we do on the summer months. We, we figure those things out.
Yeah.
I, I can tell you that her numbers are also high. The students are very excited about this. And there is a huge industry that's cottage-driven, but there's a lot of people making a lot, really good money on Etsy, doing things just like this. So I, I'm sure there's something out there for everybody. We have a great graphic design program, and this is where students receive all of those Adobe certifications. And in this case, um, this was a poster for Highland's Rampage. So our health professions, unlike everything else, this is just the easier way to explain this, that all students, if they're going into one of our health programs, they have to take health professions. And then they go to medical terminology, everybody does. And for medical terminology, then you can branch out to any of our six health programs that we offer. We offer every program that the state, it has endorsed. Um, last year, you know, I, I'm sure I was bragging last year on our medical assistant program, because we piloted that for the school, for the state, and now we have, um, three, this, we're in our third year. And we have several students, like more than a dozen, that have gone on to the medical assisting program at ISU or right into the LPN program. They're, they've just done real- They're, they've just done really well. So all students start out with fundamentals of health professions and move on from there. Um, this is our CNA program. These, these are students who are very interested in becoming, you know, a nurse of some level. You know, they may stay as CNA, they may go to LPN, they may become a nurse, a nurse practitioner, but that is their pathway. And then we have our medical assistant, which is similar, but exactly opposite. You know, they, there's a lot of similarities there, but medical assistants are, are people who do so many other things than a CNA. But still that same compassion for patients. Um, we have a farm tech program. We have a rehab services program, which encompasses all the therapies. So occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, you know, all those therapies. That's what they become exposed to in this class, our pathway. Our dental program, before we go into welding, our dental program is actually housed at ISU. Um, and so we send students to ISU to take the dental assisting program up there. And then we have industrial welding, and we used to have, this is Jack Garrett, he's our welding instructor. We used to have an ag welding program, but in ag welding, the standards are very different than industrial welding. And so we decided to move away from ag welding and go to industrial welding because we could offer students a better, a better experience, and they would be more qualified to be able to go out and get that first job. Um, we do have these, I call it a bridge to post-secondary because we do have programs that we send our students to ISU College of Technology. They commit either in their junior or senior year to a half a day there. And they are, I mean, essentially a college student. And so we have the automotive collision and repair, the computerized drafting and design, the dental assistant, precision machining, and paralegal studies. And I think we'll, by the end of, you know, we'll probably be bringing some more in the fall for additional programs that have caught on that this is a really great pipeline right to their programs, and that the students are interested. And we're not talking about a lot of students here. In automotive, there's two. You know, in drafting, there's seven. Um, you know, we're talking about a small number, but for them, it's, it's really wonderful. And I can tell you that right now, we have nearly a hundred percent, um, finish rate at ISU, that they'll go through with us. And they may have one semester left, but they will finish the program at ISU.
And thank you for doing all the paperwork for each one of these things, because one student wants to do it, and I know that you bend over backwards, and I don't know many people that would do that. So I just wanted to tell you thank you.
Well, thanks. Um, part of these programs is that every area has a career technical organization. It's a club. And it's infused right into our pathways. So we don't really have lunch meetings. I mean, they're, it, it happens during class. Kids are not required to be part of it, but we do encourage them because it is a great learning opportunity for them, and it's fun. And so that's BPA, FCCLA, HOSA and Skills. Um, there are two others, but we don't have those areas, or if we do, for example, engineering has decided instead of going with TSA, they're gonna go with Skills USA. So these are our four that we support here in this district. And these are kids, some of our kids that have competed this year in, you know, different competitions. Our BPA students just got back from Texas on Sunday, so. So to the funding, we are funded by three different sources. We have CTE added cost funds, which, um, takes care of things like supplies, professional development, travel, um, equipment. We, this year, we were, um, awarded a startup grant for the ecology natural resources, and so we were able to put in a very high-tech uh, computer lab with, um, GIS systems that they can take drones out and take water samples, you know, on the top of any spring, anywhere close to us that they can get to. Uh, we also get a Perkins Grant every year, which is federal money. And then we get our career technical school money, which is all those programs that had a green title on them. And the only way that we get that is if we have a fifteen percent movement between the other two schools. So if, if welding is at Highland, which it is, then fifteen percent of those seats are held open for Pokey and Century students. Not only so to give them a chance, but we also want that funding because welding is an incredibly expensive program to run. Just the supplies alone are astronomical. He, he can't afford to run it on his added cost funds. So we depend heavily on that, that technical school money. The other side of this slide, I'm very excited to tell you that this is the first year that we will be issuing CTE diplomas. And it's a little medallion that will go on their high school diploma. It's on their transcript. And they will also get a cord to wear at graduation. And so we are, we are in the throes of testing everybody at the last minute to try to get them all in by tomorrow because, um, you know, the registrars need them in time. But I wanted to let you know that as of right now, the people who have passed the workplace readiness, and we test all seniors that are in a CTE class, whether it's their first one they've ever taken, or they're in the capstone. Four hundred and thirty-five students have passed that this year out of the graduating class. And so I, and that's, I think, very impressive. And, um, and so I don't know how many, I'd love to have, tell you right this second, how many CTE diplomas we're gonna pass out. But, uh, I, I don't know. It could be two hundred, maybe two fifty. I have no idea. But I'm excited, and I, I told Sue I'm going to all the graduations this year, just to see all those little green cords walk past me and know, you know what? This is the fruit of our labor. This is a, an exciting thing for, for kids, so. Um, our goals for next year is that we are, you know, like I said, we're, we're exploring that cloud computing. It's gonna be a great partnership. We're opening culinary and textile des- and design. And then, of course, you know, we're still looking into, you know, what, what does our future look like as far as a CTE building? Mostly, I'd just like to say thank you for supporting CTE.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your passion for it.
I love this. Can, is there any way parents could see this?
Um.
Somehow get it?
Well, I think it now becomes public record because we're in the meeting, right?
Right, if they went to the board doc.
Well.
Right, if they have, they went to board docs and all that, but like, it's maybe a link in newsletter?
So, you know, so actually, all these little slides are what I'm gonna build my brand-new webpage off of. So as I was gathering all the information, I thought, okay, these are my cheat sheets for later on. Because in June, we all are making new, apparently new webpages, so that's, that's the plan.
So that would be on the, like a district webpage?
Yeah, on our district webpage.
You can click on the CT and then become familiar with the program. That's great.
How does a student become awareable? I mean, I had no idea these all exist.
You know what?
How does, I mean, I guess you do open houses in the fall and, and kids can go?
So, you know, Heather, uh, do you mind if I call you by your first name?
Please do.
Um, that is the biggest challenge we have. It really is. It's, it's bigger than anything else because, you know, and it, and it's, it's heartbreaking to me to know that kids get to their senior year and they say, oh, I had no idea, but I should have started that when I was a sophomore. Or, you know, and so we do try to block our classes so that even if a student is a senior, they may not be able to finish the entire thing, but they could get a long ways into that. At least they, and then we can give them that bridge to, well, here's your next step at post-secondary, or this is a great company to go talk to because you have at least an interest in this. It, it's really hard. It, I'm gonna tell you that I have not in all, and I've been doing this since ninety-two. Okay, so it's a long time. And unless you really almost sit down with small groups of people and take them through just what we did, it, it's really hard to get that word out, and I don't know what the answer is.
It almost seems like you need to go.
So we do an elective fair?
We do. I mean, we do all kinds of things.
I know the elective fair, but I almost wonder, is it, it going into the middle schools and starting doing something?
They do do that.
We weren't able to go to the elective fair, so I'm not sure, like, everybody, that's a way to get to everyone? Uh, we weren't able to go, but then a lot of parents just choose not to go.
Can you expand just a little bit too?
Yeah, so they do go into the middle schools and, and do some advertising ahead of time. And then also, all of our students do a four-year plan. And that's reviewed every single year with a counselor. So they meet with their counselor every year to go over their four-year plan. Is this still your interest? But what are you interested in? What, let's get you set up for this, that, and the other thing? Um, so they have an awful lot of opportunities to be introduced to it. A lot of our kids are just, their brain hasn't formed all the way, and so they haven't figured out that, oh, hey, I would really be interested in.
It seems like they need like a hands-on kind of, you know, because I can imagine sitting with a counselor, and your parents have been telling you, oh, you're going to college. You just gotta go to college. So put me on the college prep class. And then they have no interest in going to college. Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think there ought to be some ways to.
Well, I don't know what class that is. I got a grandson in the eighth grade over at Irving, and I know that he just got through, in his one class that he's taken, they, they did a three-D printer thing. They printed something. He came up with a, made his own logo, put it on his bottle. Uh, they're working with some wood right now and doing some things, and so. And, and I think that's probably helping to introduce him to some of these things, which, he's, he's been really excited. He loves working with his hands and doing stuff, and so.
And I love the fact that the state pays for this, for the kids. If you go to ISU and do those classes, all of that's covered, because when my first kids were at Highland, we paid for, and it was still a great price. But I don't know, one or two hundred dollars for each class or something. I don't remember what it was, but then, now the state pays for every single class. What, each kid gets up to how many thousands?
Four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. It's advanced opportunities money.
Yeah.
I just know that, so Janie Gebhardt, passing a tone to me, she said this was her passion, and she said, please get involved and please help with this. So I would love to help whatever, if, you know, coming up with some ideas on how we can continue to get this.
Oh, and one thing I did want to bring up, I, I know, I know it's, time is short. We need to move on. But one thing I do want to bring up is, um, I would never want to use this as a whipping stick for kids. In other words, if they're failing a core class, I don't want, oh, we're gonna pull your CT away from you as a punishment. Because this is something that if they don't stay, is that right? If they don't stay in the pathway, if they maybe are getting an F in math or English, um, if they're pulled, then they can't finish if they don't, if they're not, if they're taken out of that pathway.
So the counselors meet with them and, and weigh the pros and cons on what classes need to be made up and what classes they can afford to take later in life.
So it's not, they're not pulled out of it as a punishment for failing. They're only pulled out if they don't have enough time to meet requirements?
So if, if, if they're failing a math class, they failed integrated one, and they have to redo that class, um, the counselors will meet with them and say, okay, this was in your four-year plan that you were gonna take
Welding.
Welding next year.
Right.
And you're gonna have to take this math class sometime, so you can take it in a summer school, or we can put it in your schedule for next year. But something's gonna have to give next year that you had a plan. And so the kids are, are, the kids and parents are, are notified about it. But there's choices that have to be made. There's still only a limited amount of time in high school.
Oh, so they're given opportunities to remain in the pathway. Oh, I love that. Okay, thank you.
Well, and I just want to add to that, I, I, there's research that's, that's been done over and over again that when students who are, let's say, not highly motivated to stay in school, that, um, as they're moving through a CTE pathway, that their other classes become more relevant because all of the sudden, and I can give you an example in our own district, um, the law enforcement teacher said that their writing skills were very poor. Like they, like the students who came in those first couple of years, he was, he was wondering like why, and they, and they said, well, they hated English. And so then he explained to them that, you know, when you're a, a street patrolman, and you go to an accident, and you write down something, and then it later goes to court over a lawsuit, the attorney wasn't there. They didn't see what you saw. And so unless you write it down in detail, legibly, so that someone else can read it, then you might as well not have even shown up. And immediately, all of their English scores started coming up, and the English department called him over there and said, okay, we want to know what you're doing with these kids because this is not normal. And he said, this is why, because CTE makes other subjects relevant. All of a sudden, those other things become more important to them. And, and for, for some students, I'm sure it's the reason they graduate. I, I don't have any doubt that they would have, they would have dropped out otherwise.
Yeah, well, well, something similar happened to someone I'm close to, and that is that grades were not a thing. Were not important. Not that they were Fs, they were just not important.
Right.
Till they got into the MA program, suddenly, it was how, whatever grades, what, it was a complete turnaround. And it was because that vision is there, oh, I, I need to do that because that is my pathway. Even, even though you can tell them as parents, if you get good grades or else you can't go on, they're like, whatever.
Yeah.
But they were, she was there, and she got, she understood that. And I love that, so thank you.
Can you tell me about the transportation? That, how are these kids are getting from the school to school, and is that, I mean, if they're transporting themselves, or?
So currently, they are transporting themselves. Um, and our funding changed back to, we can do some midday transportation, so we are exploring doing some midday transportation for next year.
So if kids don't have their own car?
Right now, they're, they, they find ways. They, they have partnered with somebody.
This has always been a question in my mind.
Yeah.
My daughter ended up driving several kids to get to orchestra. I mean, is that a liability for the district?
Can be.
Yeah.
So what about a building? Have we?
Okay, so that's my part. So, and, and I was gonna share with some of our new board members. So we started looking at a CTE building a few years ago, and we talked to, um, to ISU. They had some land that they were, um, looking at donating to us, and it, then it got bogged down, and people left, and it had to go to the lawyers, and it got bogged down some more, and it's, it's kind of stagnated. So, um, I have a meeting with a person from the College of Technology tomorrow morning, and I'm gonna talk to her a little bit about, is this still a possibility? Part of the problem was when we looked at perhaps putting a building on that piece of property, ISU was dictating what we were going to be putting in our building.
A lot of strings attached.
And so, lots of strings attached. And so, um, that seems to have changed a little bit, and we'll, we're gonna explore a little more. I don't know whether that's an opportunity still or not. Um, we looked at, um, purchasing a building here in town. We went and looked at it several times, and then it was purchased out from underneath us. So that didn't go. Um, we've looked at a building that their business is no longer in that building, and we have discovered that they did not own that building. They leased it from someone else. So that's not an opportunity. Um, and so, um, we're, we're, you know, like I said, we're back to step one. Do we look at purchasing a building? Do we look at building a building? Either way, there's some challenges with that, and we're going to have to look at bonding to be able to do that, to be able to afford to do that. So that's not a right-of-way thing. Um, and it is what it is. Um, the other thing about a, a CTE building, um, we cannot pull every single CTE teacher out of their high schools and have them go over to a CTE building right away. Uh, a lot of these teachers teach, um, freshman classes and sophomore classes. They don't just teach capstone classes. And so, and they don't all teach all CTE all day long. So we need to pull them out strategically and make sure that, um, we leave a, a functioning staff at the high schools, so.
I do, can I ask you something about that? Because I know the busing is not paid for unless there's a physical building.
Correct.
So if there's a physical building, but like you're saying, a couple of teachers really need to stay at those schools, can that busing, I mean, the busing is going back and forth. Can't the kid get bus to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that would work too.
So, um, and one of the things I want to talk to you about, and, and I'm hoping that she'll be voting on next week, is the ITB building that we talked about at Pokey. Right now, our CTE program is a virtual program. We would like your permission next week, and you need to think about it, um, to rename the ITB building to be our Gateway Professional Technical Building. And the reason being, right now, we have our, um, first responders program in there. And all the students that go there from Pocatello High School do not count as traveling students because it's still attached to Pocatello High School. If we termed that our CTE building, we can count every student that's going there as a traveling student, which adds to our CTS funding.
And then can you afford, then you can do the busing, right?
Yeah.
It's for, what, eighty-five percent of the bus, busing cost?
So, uh, that's, that's a, that's a next week thing. And if you have some questions about it, if you'll come in and talk to me or talk to Rhonda about it this week sometime, um, I'm more than happy to talk to you about it. We have two programs over there. Right now, we have law enforcement and then the firefighter EMT. We are looking at putting perhaps at least two more programs over there, and that would be our environmental science. and that would be our environmental science program and our engineering program that's at Poki.
Is this the renovation of the upstairs?
That's just the downstairs. That's just the downstairs. Um, we have a couple of, I've, I've got to walk through with, um, Alan and Jonathan and cast some vision on what we can and can't do. Um, and then we've been through the attic upstairs to see what we can do and it's kind of on hold at the moment because we have to get permission from you guys to go farther and so.
But there is maybe an option to put more rooms upstairs?
Yes, maybe.
Maybe.
We.
I would love to.
My, in my dream, yes. In an engineer's dream, maybe. Uh, but that would be a start and it, it can be, the, the CTE building can be buildings. It doesn't have to be a building, but that would be a good start for us to get it at least started.
Right.
Wow, that's great. I didn't realize it could be more than one building.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's good to know.
Yep.
So the busing would count for going to Idaho State? And, I mean, not that that would be considered a CTE building, but would they also pay for that?
I don't know they'd pay to go to Idaho State or not.
Okay.
That, we'd have to, we're, we're still in the investigation stage on that one.
Okay. I was going to ask you, I was, I, I was talking to a commissioner and somebody from Idaho State just, um, with the, I don't know, an emergency preparedness thing we went to. Um, they mentioned, uh, the Ballard Building, is it, was it?
It's not Ballard, it's Eames now. And there's, the land that they were talking about was the land that's, um, just north west?
They were saying.
North, northwest. Yeah, of the Eames complex.
They were saying that there might be room in that building, the, the, the professor from Idaho State said that.
So I've talked with the College of Technology, they have big dreams for that building and I don't think there's going to be any room in that space.
I just thought I would ask because.
Yeah, no, they're, they, they've, they've filled that in their minds several times over and have lots of people, um.
Want.
Wanting space there.
Okay. Was the, can I ask, was it the building over by the mall that was one that fell through?
Correct. That was, that's, uh, that particular company built that building and then sold it and they're leasing it and they've already signed their lease for the next while, so.
Well, that's too bad.
Okay, all right, and I've got to go up and do physicals, I've got to take pictures, so I'm gonna. Not have the kids getting physicals.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate your information.
Thank you. This was so good.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is public and written comment. Written comment is included in the packet and we have no request for public comment. Will now consider adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel matters. I would like to excuse everyone and we would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session. Is there a motion?
I hereby move the Board of Trustees proceed into executive session to discuss matters such as, as allowed by Idaho Code 74-206, which provides that a public agency may conduct business in executive session to consider, uh, evaluation, dismissal, disciplining of or hearing complaints.
Um, before we go, uh, let's, we're so last with the call to technology.
Charges?
Yeah.
Okay, I hereby declare as adjourned an executive session for the purpose of personnel. I will now turn the time over to Superintendent Howell.
No, we're beyond that. We need to go back to open session.
Oh, I'm sorry. I call this meeting back to order in open session, sorry. And no action will be taken pertinent to personnel matters at this time. I will now convene in a special session, meeting, a special meeting for action. We'll begin with a renewal of human resource activity request by Brenda Minor.
Okay. Mine's just really quick. We have a teacher and you can see that in your packet that needs to be left to go on leave for the remainder of the year. She's also not returning to us in the fall.
Oh.
And so, but everything has been completed. I spoke with her principal today, her evaluation, everything is complete. She just has some family situation that needs her to be able to be released from her contract. They have, because of the situation that she's in as a counselor, they made sure that everything is taken care of.
Okay.
With her students. Okay?
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is review the notice of ratification by the Pocatello Education Association.
Insurance.
Insurance carriers.
Oh my goodness. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay. Next Carl Smart will review the proposed insurance carriers and coverages, which is included in the addendum.
All right. This works well tonight, doesn't it? All right, in your packet you have a couple of things related to our insurance proposals. We met over the last couple of weeks with our insurance committee. And as you are well aware, of course, we had some conversations with our negotiations team a week ago about the the package that they would recommend. And based upon the conversations with the insurance committee and looking at some last minute adjustments that we were able to get from our broker concerning some proposals from Pacific Source. Ultimately, it came down to the committee would recommend going with the state plan. And we know that's going to cost a little bit extra. Now, I use the word a little bit facetiously, facetiously, because we know that that's quite a quite a jump, thirty-three point six percent in fact, over our current plan costs. But we do know that the state will contribute more than enough to cover our our general fund employees. So what the excess we will have will help go help fund the plan for our other funds as well.
So is it still an increase in cost considering the money that comes from the state? Is it still an increase in cost?
It it depends on how we, how, which plan we look at. We have, we've looked at the one where the it's twelve thousand five hundred and there's also the church surcharged rate. And we are planning on signing an agreement with the state and that agreement is in here as well. You saw that. Let's say we're gonna, we're gonna pay for the people who are participants on the plan at the non-surcharge rate. And that came out to our benefit when we do it that way. And so, if we were to look at the surcharge rate, which is another thousand dollars per employee per year, that would have been and we would have been in a position where we were looking for funds to cover that cost.
And what's the difference between the surcharge versus the non-surcharge?
It goes back to a comment that the officer group, Officer Group Insurance put out weeks ago. And it talks about the surcharge rate would be for, for those entities that didn't want to have all of their, their employees to be participants on the plan. And the rationale for that was they said, we were, we are sending you money for benefits. If you're not going to use the money for benefits, we're going to charge you, we're going to do an upcharge for, on you for not utilizing those funds to go towards benefits. Ultimately, we were using every last dollar the state is sending us for benefits. We are adding to it to be able to cover everybody else. So with that rationale in mind, that's why we were, we're going with the non-surcharge rate with only the participants. In fact, our, our, our plan with Pacific Source required all full-time employees, all full-time employees to be participants because we wanted to keep our pool healthy. And that's kind of what set us apart from many of the districts which allowed employees out if they had other coverage and we did not do that. So the the, the recommended recommendation is here in your packet. The dental and vision is part of the plan. As we have budgeted, we have budgeted for twelve thousand five hundred. We have not budgeted for dental, but we have budgeted for vision and our, our general fund budget includes about seventy-two thousand dollars in it for vision insurance. It's our understanding that vision is part of this and so we might have seventy-two thousand dollars that we can utilize to go to other parts of our budget. And as we look at salaries, that could be used even there. And we have a life, a life insurance benefit that we offer our employees and it will remain with, with Hartford and with no change in cost for this next year because we're in a midst of a two-year guarantee with that plan. And other than that, I think if you have other questions, but I think most of them have been answered over the last several weeks as we've discussed this.
I just kind of want to know what the total extra cost is between your, the Pacific Source and then moving to this. Cause I know that this state gives the money back for the
Well, normally I'm like two point four six million dollars.
Oh, okay.
What does it mean by there's no wellness requirements or is that when you did those classes and you got extra?
Currently for, on our, on our Pacific Source plan, by participating in certain wellness, in certain wellness programs or taking care of wellness things with your physician, we would get up to four percent discount on our, on our Pacific Source renewal. So that's not going to be part of this in any, in any way. And if an employee did not want to participate in wellness, we actually had them pay sixty-five dollars towards their own premium. Now, for those people who were paying the sixty-five dollars moving to the state plans, it's going to be almost the same as being on Pacific Source, Pacific Source without having the wellness credit. So
Are you envisioning still doing those wellness activities?
Well, we had that conversation in our wellness, in insurance committee last night. And we've built a culture around a lot of our wellness things. And flu shots and our health fair where we do blood draws and, and you know, we're able to participate in some of those things. We would like to continue offering that, some sort of wellness to continue with that culture that we've built over the last, I don't know, probably fifteen years that we've been doing this.
And the, and did Pacific Source help pay for that and?
They did.
Okay, so, and would that be an additional cost now or would the insurance?
Well, that's, that's the question we got to find an answer to. We don't know the answer. Because our, our blood draws and our, our flu shots, they all went through the carrier. So the carrier paid for those. And looking at the benefits last night, it looked very similar that maybe they would do that. But our, our issue might be is when people don't have to do it because they would get the, the, the discount on their premium, will they continue to participate? So anyway, we, we met, when we, when we met last night, we talked about that and maybe meet in the fall again and maybe talk about some of these things that we would like to continue to do. Like we have Wellness Wednesdays. We, you know, we do a lot of things that we could still continue to do.
I want to, another question is, now, we talked about buy-in before. So is this two point four the buy-in or is this ongoing every year that is going to come to?
Well, w- once we've increased this amount to two, two and a quarter million dollars for this current year, what we will then receive is, is increases just like we would any other plan. And as anticipated, we've been told by the legislature, legislature, legis, I guess right, legislators that they, they have committed to continue to fund this plan for those districts to participate. So hopefully that, that's true. But we still do have to come up with a buy-in and
So this two point four is not?
It does not include the buy-in. The buy-in is going to be, and it's on this last sheet, is three and a half million dollars to do the buy-in. The state is going, is going to, to offer us two points seven nine million as part of that plan when they, when they did away with the leadership premiums to help districts get that buy-in. So we will, we will be able to do most of the buy-in through the, the state's resources.
I see.
But we will have to come up with about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So around six million? Three?
Could you net that for us? So all of the state support versus the district? So we were anticipating an increase already?
Yes, through Pacific Source.
That would have been a million dollars right there, right?
So take that off.
So maybe if you could just net it for us.
Oh, I'd be doing it in my head, so. So the, the two point four million dollars that we're going to take is an increase. We'll need to do that. We'll need to add, we need to add, of course, the, the three and a half. So three and a half and two point four is now we're up to almost six million dollars. We're going to get some money back from this date for the buy-in, so that's less two point seven. We are going to get three point nine from our ongoing, not ongoing costs, our, our unit value. So that will come off as well.
The increase in unit value that we have this year?
Yes, yes. And so, in excess funds, that'll leave us about nine million, nine hundred thousand or almost a million dollars there. And so, the million dollars we have in excess with the seven hundred and fifty-two that we have to pay to get in is almost like two hundred thousand dollars to the good.
But that, but that would be taking all of the funds that we got for the enrollment, the?
That would be taking all funds.
All of that, all of that.
Yes.
And that, okay.
We know there are some funds that just will not be able to handle that increase in funding. And it's something we have not done in the past to support those extra, those special funds. So that'll be some conversation we'll have to have with those, those directors that have those funds and how, how it might be done. If it's going to mess up anything with their, their funding with the state too, so.
Now, for which thing? For the leadership or?
For example, special education. That's a federally funded program?
That's Title I stuff.
So they, they are not considered that you would, they wouldn't get the reimbursement from the state?
Those, those, the people in those special funds were not even considered in this formula the state put together.
And bus drivers, the certified, the other?
The bus drivers are funded through a different mechanism, food service, Head Start. We have a whole
But they would all be covered under this?
We would be able to, it looks like we would be able to do that with the funding that we got.
Can we use any Esser funds for the buy-in?
That we're still investigating. But I think we're not the only ones investigating as, as we, as we've heard, so.
Cause, yeah. Cause I know most, are any other districts doing this plan?
I have heard through the Great Biden that there are maybe some up north that are considering it. The only one that we know of for sure is, that's coming from Amy White last week, was this charter school that has jumped in and signed the contracts.
And so no one else in the state? No other district in the state?
We're not aware of any, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of lookers. So we're all window.
Tell you what the rumor mill is from Superintendent meeting yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we met yesterday and within our group, originally there were about two considering it, out of maybe thirteen or so. I would say now we're up to about five that are considering it, having the same discussions with employees and the board. And then we've also heard that Isle Falls, District ninety-one.
Is considered one of them?
As one. If they potentially go, you wonder, you know, if the other, because they're in the same community, but they may not be in the same circumstance because plans and premiums are so different. And, yeah, so everyone's up to decide for themselves.
Right. And one other question I had is, I'm just curious as to why this wasn't a part of the teacher negotiations because it definitely
Well, it was.
Oh, it was?
It was. And I'm going to share that with you here too in a minute.
It's separate from any, any salary benefit, any increases that way. It's a separate?
And I'll be honest with you, I do not recall if we discussed this with you on Thursday or not. But there was a, there was an item.
We did.
Yeah, they wanted to put it in the
And what I'm going to share with you this afternoon is the, the change that we did based upon this proposal. Cause there was an if or sort of thing that we agreed on. And so, I will share with you what that looks like in the negotiated agreement based upon their desire to go to the state plan.
Oh, okay.
Cause that was, it was very specific in their, in their agreement.
But they did make it.
Yeah, that they wanted that, that change to happen. And as you, as we've talked, there have been a lot of window shoppers on this plan and
They're just waiting to see, they're waiting for somebody to take the first move.
There's probably a lot of truth to that, so.
Do you know, I mean, are provider access the same? I mean, of what they had access to in Pacific Source? I mean, are they going to be able to go to the same?
As far as we can tell, the answer is yes.
Boy, that'll be next. If they can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What happens when a, a, an entity becomes self-insured? They usually, they usually, I think it's the case with the states. They, they contract with a carrier, which in this case happens to be, be Blue Cross.
Okay.
And that use the Blue Cross network. Now, the Blue Cross network or the Blue Cross plans that we've seen, they have a PPO and a traditional. The traditional will probably be the most rich in the way of, of being able to have choices and what it covers. We have basically been doing everything, all of our planning off of the, the PPO. The district expense does not change whether it's a PPO or the traditional.
There'll just be an additional cost to it.
It'll be an additional twenty dollars to their employee if they want to go one or the other. And they might get into the PPO and say, this is not for me. I might have to invest a little bit more, go to the traditional. Or they might say, I'm not using it. I'm going to go to the high deductible plan and just pay fifteen bucks.
Right.
So it's going to be up to the employee to make that decision, but the, the cost of the district will not change.
Yeah, the reason I was asking if we could use Esser funds is just because then the rest of the budget, it would go toward not having to ask for more money as far as levy and stuff, you know, that could maybe be a possibility that it could maybe kind of taper a little and then, you know, go back up based on the funding that we've gotten through Esser. Is that a possibility?
Well, I'm, I'm not going to say yes or no, but we are looking if Esser is available.
That would be really, really.
And I, and as far as I know, we have not received an answer to that.
Okay.
So I don't know if we're going to be in a position tonight where we are going to maybe vote on this or not. Are we going to vote on it tonight? So that is the data we have for you to verse, for the insurance plan. And as I mentioned, that was approved by the, the committee last night.
So do you think the insurance had anything to do with the one hundred percent approval?
That's what I was saying.
You know what, I have
An increase in benefits.
I was surprised to see a hundred percent.
And I'll be honest with you, you heard this last week when we, when we were discussing this and Brenda said it very well. I think we have a good enough relationship with our association now. They can see, they know we're not trying to do anything underhanded.
Cool.
We're trying to be upfront and be fair and, and all, everything we can, everything we do is trying to be fair to all of our employees. So whether that had a part in it or the insurance have a part in it, it could be. But I think a lot of it plays into our relationship.
Maybe, yeah.
And you don't, and you don't see a shortfall that we would have since we're taking all of the funds that we got from enrollment? We won't see a shortfall in any other place by doing the buy-in, using that for the buy-in?
I can tell you just by virtue of what I've seen in the budget preparation that we've put together. And I was anticipating maybe sharing with, with you a little bit tonight, but we're going to postpone that till next week. That there are sufficient funds to make that work. So coming up short next year, the year after that, it's going to be up to the legislature to come through with their promise that they're going to continue to fund that.
If they don't do, get the millions back?
Well, that's, that's a good, that's a good question.
I have never heard of any refunds.
No, no. And this, this contract is for five years and Amy White mentioned that's kind of odd for a government entity to require another government entity to go into a five-year span of contracts.
But they're charging that money.
Yes, they are. So we want to get our money's worth out of it too. And
Right.
And if things go sour, I hope that it doesn't. Trying to get back into another plan in the future will be challenging because we won't have our own data to rely upon anymore. It's going to be an aggregate with the state. And so it will, if we ever have to cross that bridge, it will, it will be challenging.
So if a lot of legislators change with primaries in the election, is that what you mean by goes sour? That they wouldn't vote to continue?
Well, if, if the plan happens to have twenty percent increases, twenty percent increase on a thirteen thousand dollar premium is pretty hefty. And they, and they, and they're not able to fund it, then you know, then we're going to have to see if there's other options out there.
I see. And one other thing pharmacy, would, would the coverage be about the same as going through the Pacific Source?
As far as we know.
For pharmacy? So they would have that coverage?
We, they have the same kind of tiering that Pacific Source has.
Cause you're going through Blue Cross, so you could use that.
Yes.
Because I know that some of the really expensive bi- biologic medicines require and is certain, require insurances to cover a certain before they will cover the rest of it.
And I can tell you most insurances will have you do some step therapy to make sure that a lesser or a less expensive drug could be just as effective.
Right, but if, if you arrive Right, but if, if you arrive at the biologic, then I just know from experience that, um, the bio, the company will cover it for the patient if the insurance will pay for part of it. I just wanted to be sure that, cause that's kind of a big.
They're all, they're all in this together somehow. There's the, the TPAs and the, and the, um, pharmacy, uh, oh, what is that? There's a term for it and I'm coming up empty handed on the term for it, but they all work together to make it happen. And for the, the specialty drugs, there are some, some copays, no matter where you are, those, there are special copays for them. So if you rely on those, it's a sad state that you really are faced upon, you know, some financial challenges by that drug.
So, but if they require, if they kind of are partnered with Blue Cross, Blue Cross does do that, does work with.
Yeah, every, as far as I know, every insurance company does.
Okay, good. Some insurances, sometimes they won't cover the remaining like four thousand dollars a month if the insurance won't cover the first part of it. So it's kind of, it's a really big deal to make sure that the insurance will cover the patient.
And I'll be honest with you, I have never heard anybody in this community that saw the state plan complain about how rotten it is, so.
Okay.
Cause we have people who, you know, those injectables for arthritis and that sort of thing. I know people that take them, so.
And they're covered?
And they're covered.
Good.
Can we move on to the, the next one?
You bet, move on.
The notice, notice of ratification by the PEA, I don't know if you got anything different, but mine was a simple email that said we ratified a hundred percent. Thank you, let's move on, sort of thing. If you choose to ratify the contract tonight as well, we have signatures for you, Mr. Facer, or signature sheets for you to put it in our agreements. And so, um, it's, uh, it's easily done and we're, we'll move on to preparing ourselves to issue contracts on the new amount. Anything else you wanna add there? Okay. Uh, what's item D here? Review the negotiated agreement. We did it in excruciating detail last week, so I don't wanna go and do another session like we had a week ago. But there is one change over what we did a year, a week ago. And that's Article Five Insurance Benefits. And this is based on the if or scenario that we were in, if we were gonna go with the state plan or not. And this is the new language based upon going to the state plan. And it's basically just saying, we're gonna have the following insurances available. And there really are no wellness provisions in this new plan.
And they agreed upon that?
And they agreed on that. And I did go through and clean up a couple of the typos that were there last week too, so. All right.
Any questions, comments?
Uh, and I guess that's it. Unless we wanna take some of these out of order.
That's it for presentation, so now it is moving on to action items.
Okay, are you done? Okay, um, guess we'll move on to action items now. Uh, we will now consider approving the human resource activities. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board approve the human resource activity as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passed. Uh, next we will consider approving the insurance carrier and coverage. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board approve the insurance carriers and coverages as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think we already had that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is passed. Next we will consider ratifying negotiation agreement between the Pocatello Education Association and the Pocatello Chupac School District, number twenty-five, Board of Trustees for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that we, um, ratify the, say again?
Negotiated.
Negotiation.
The negotiated agreement, which, oh, here it is, between the Pocatello Education Association and the Pocatello School District twenty-five Board of Trustees. Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passed. Okay, next we'll consider setting compensation levels for the administration and the superintendent for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. All right. Can't find that on me anyway. Is there a motion?
So I'm trying to understand this. Um, is this part of the negotiated agreement or is this outside?
Hmm, is, everything else besides teacher salaries is outside the agreement.
So this is a new thing?
This is what's being proposed?
Yes.
I have issues with it. I know that's not gonna make me very popular. I don't know if anybody else is gonna speak up. I think one of the things I had heard the most is that there are questions about administrative salaries. And, um, I think a three percent or, I, I mean, oh, I, I think it's difficult for me to justify if you have these raises every year. And I think administrators are paid very healthily in this district. And if we are trying to come up with a difference of what we need to make up, um, I just have questions and issues with it.
That's fair.
And I don't really understand the salary schedule, so. I guess I see the three percent increase, but other than that, it isn't, it isn't making a lot of sense to me.
What are your questions, Mr. Chief? What can we help?
I, is, are we looking at the same thing, this?
No.
No, that's classified administrative.
Oh, okay, so tell me which page I was supposed to be looking at.
On H, if you pop open H.
Oh, okay.
I guess it's because I've also, you know, when I've been in C-level positions with companies, boy, I would have loved to have had a raise every single year. And it just feels, if, if, where we need to be, I mean, a three percent on a administrator's salary is significantly more than that three percent that we're covering and offering to the clerical or the teachers. And it, it just feels out of balance to me.
So is this, does this percentage for the administrators, is it an every-year thing as well as the, like with the teachers?
It, what we've, what we've traditionally done in the past, and we, we, we typically like to measure an increase based upon movement plus a percentage. And, uh, for instance, this year, the equivalent that we're offering to the teachers is movement plus three percent. So on their salary schedule, it looks like they had three percent additional funds, but plus they got movement within that schedule. So that's when you see, um, movement down from step one to step two, or step two to step three, that's the movement. Until they eventually reach the bottom tier. And, uh, when they reach that bottom tier, then they get whatever we're able to, to put into that cell for an increase. In this particular year, for a master's degree, it happened to be at about four, four percent for masters.
Have an increase?
Yes. I don't remember, it's, uh.
But wouldn't there have been an in, I mean, every year someone would move on the tier? And by just the movement on the tier would have been an increase, correct?
Yes, they get both.
Yeah, same for teachers.
Right.
So it'd be up to like nine percent, four, five, six, seven percent, potentially?
Yes, there, there's that potential, and that, that's, and that is, that's one of the shortfalls, or I guess if you wanna call that, of, of a salary schedule like this. And this, the career ladder developed by the state is very similar. You move across it. The, uh, the, the grid used by the state to reimburse administrative salaries is the very same way. You're, ultimately, you're gonna reach a point where you are at the very top and your increases will be based upon whatever we're able to put into that schedule. You're not gonna get movement. So to anticipate getting five or six percent every year is out of the realm of reality. You're going to get whatever, when we talked about movement plus three percent, that's where we're gonna be.
The bottom, I guess, which is the top, I mean, you say the bottom of the.
Well, I'm just looking at the top here, the bottom is on the.
Then it did get movement this year though, in teachers.
Unless you're at the very bottom, when it's step ten, then you do not, you stay at step ten for the additional year. There's not an infinite number of steps where you could continue to get movement.
Okay, because, but I thought the ten did increase. I don't have that in front of me.
It did increase by, like I said, we, movement plus three percent, so, uh.
Yeah, I thought it did increase.
Yeah, for those in the masters, it's twenty-nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah, I thought that it did increase this year.
It did, it went twenty, increased twenty-nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah, I thought it was two to three thousand dollars.
And that's where we talk about the movement plus three percent. They usually will get that three percent. And, um, depending, and last year was kind of an anomaly year where they were doing some shifting around. Maybe there was a little bit more in some of those areas, but, uh, typically that's what we do. With that being said, this is really the, a bird walk trying to get to that, that, that point. When we did that, we would try to do the same thing with other employee groups, even though the state was not providing the funding to make that happen.
Yeah.
And so, um, as I mentioned, we, we're trying to be fair and equitable across all groups. And so if that was the case, then we, that's what we would try to do. We also have, we have to face the reality too, that there are tiers within the, the organization. And, uh, a daily rate for teachers, a daily rate for the principal of the elementary school is different than that. And the daily rate for principal of the middle school is even different. And a daily rate for a principal of a high school is different from an elementary because of all the activities they have to deal with. What we're facing is many times, because of the salary schedule with, with the teachers, there's no incentive to move on to administration because the daily rates are within ten dollars or five dollars of each other. And so that is something we, we've tried to address over the last several years because that differential's been so minimal, that there's been no incentive.
Yeah, this is significant though. Starting middle school teacher versus a starting middle, middle school principal is a big difference and then there's.
But you're not gonna, you're not gonna hire a beginning teacher to be a principal in the school.
Yeah.
And so seventy-three thousand dollars on a daily rate versus a, a daily rate for your middle school or elementary principal, they're really not that different. And, and there's, many times it's not that incentive to move on. And, um, so we've tried to also incre, and make that incentive built into these schedules as well.
So when Carl talks about daily rate, our principals typically secondary come back two weeks earlier than staff and stay a week or later. So we have three additional weeks on that contract. Or elementary, I think it's one and one?
Cause elementary goes back in like mid-alg.
Or is it two?
What is it? They go back like three weeks before the school starts, right?
Two weeks early for elementary?
Three weeks.
Right, they do, right. If, if you look at your paper, it'll tell you how many days.
Yeah.
So two hundred and five, and a teacher has a hundred and ninety. So there's three weeks total that, that is added onto that. Um, and then just the other thing to keep in mind when you think of a starting teacher and you think of a starting principal, you know, they have to have a master's degree to be a principal. And so, um,
So it is definitely.
I look at this scale of the elementary principal and I had teachers that if they had a leadership premium, there was, I mean, there, there was not the incentive.
We do, we have, we have teachers that, in the past, have made more than their principals.
Yeah.
So, uh, just because of the way that these, if you get to the top, that if you give additional stipends and that sort of thing, that, it, it happens. It happens.
But if you keep chasing it, then you just, it's just more and more and more money to, you know, try to fix it going up instead of fixing it.
I think we can make a motion though, don't we?
Unless, unless we stop questioning.
Let's make the motion.
Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board set the compensation levels for the administration and superintendents for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year per the enclosed, for, uh, the enclosed administrative salary schedules as presented.
Is there a second? Is there another motion?
I would just, I would just suggest, you know, having, I guess Heather's question.
I, I need, just need more clarity on it. I mean, I'm looking at these numbers and they're just huge. And, and it, it just is, I, I need to understand where you're saying that where that teacher comes in and they aren't in, or, you know. I, I, I just, this is the one that gives me heartburn just because I know how critical the community is of administrative salaries. And we look at our teacher salaries, you know, I know this is not necessarily apples to oranges, but we talk about not replacing tracks because we don't have money, but yet, and I understand that people are the most important. Totally understand that and investing in it. But this one gives me pause just because I don't fully understand what I'm looking at and how it, how it relates. I'm, I'm ready to talk about the other two salary, but this one I need to understand better.
Like I said, that's fair enough.
Do you wanna make the motion, postpone it?
I feel the same way.
And how do I make, what do, I need, I make a motion that this requires further information to table it?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And that motion passed. Okay, next we'll consider setting compensation. Where am I? Okay, next we'll consider setting compensation levels for classified administrators for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Is there a motion?
I hereby move the board set compensation levels for the classified administrator.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. For the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, per the enclosed CLS salary schedule as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Um, I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Because on this one, the very first hourly schedule, does lane six mean forty-five dollars an hour? That's what they're being paid, the very top tier supervisor?
Right.
So who would that be?
That would be like your, um.
That is going to be, uh, our technology coordinator, our, um.
Our maintenance supervisor.
Our maintenance supervisor. Food service and transportation.
So then what would that, um, kind of salary be? If it's forty-five dollars an hour, I don't really know how many hours. I mean, is that, is that to everybody else, or am I missing something?
Well, you can use, you can use your figures, uh.
Twenty, eighty.
Yeah, two thousand hours a year.
Twenty, two thousand eighty hours a year, so.
Two thousand eighty?
Well, yeah, it, it varies amongst our employees because they're, they don't all work the same number of days.
These are your supervisors, these are the guys that have, that run the whole crew and run everybody and, um.
Do you guys understand that? Am I missing something?
No.
I mean, I understand.
That's if they're at that point, you know, who, I don't know.
But I don't, it just doesn't say who, who is.
I don't know who, I don't know if, if, like, Alan, is it, uh, tier six, level three? I don't know where he's at on the schedule, but that's.
I don't really care if it's like individual people, but just kind of in general, like who are those people and who are those people?
Our coordinators. Our coordinators.
So is the nine hundred thousand cost of schedule with movement, is that just for these, this classified? So it's, it's, it's a million, close to a million dollars to fund.
For the increase.
This year, for the next year.
That's correct.
So entry is level one, two is training, three is competency.
And, um.
The first column is clear to me, just it's hourly, but I don't know how many hours, so I don't really, I guess the total cost of being a million dollars is.
Typically, they're going to work right around two thousand hours.
Okay.
Our maintenance, our maintenance supervisor is, uh, two thousand and eighty. He's the only one that works the two hundred and sixty days a year.
So about ninety, for that very top, okay?
So you say cost.
It's not based on education or anything. It's just based on time working here, or?
There.
As far as like food service coordinator and.
Qualifications and the skill set to move from one level, entry to training to competency, that's based upon their annual evaluation.
Also not educational like teacher.
This one does not have automatic movement in it. It's done by evaluation.
Yeah, that would be two to three years.
So some would be moving and some would not be moving based on evaluation.
So what's the difference between columns? Is that experience level?
That's what he's saying.
The entry, training, competency.
And then the one through six is based on evaluations?
No, no, they're, they're, so for instance, I don't.
I'm very confused.
Yeah.
Uh, the category, the, the lane one, lane one has a separate job duty, so it might be.
Go ahead.
So there's a list of, um, one through six on those lanes. And so they're everything from starting out and they deal with, um, for example, our, um, I'm trying to think of the best way, our coordinators that would be on your food service. And I might compare you that list so that you can see who falls in which lane, if you'd like that. And so of those six, and then there's three levels. They start out at entry, training, and then competency.
I just don't know what we're voting on, so that's.
Right, and so those, and so those people, for example, that you're voting on under classified administration, who falls in that category, for example, would be the school district's accountant, it'd be our three coordinators. The, we have six different lanes, and so those people fall in those different lanes. And I haven't broken down for it, but I think a grand total of all of those people is here in the car.
How many people?
Under that classified administration.
Uh, I.
It's like.
I don't have my, is it?
If you look at this, um, chart that, it's in your packet that Carl gave us, um, the other day. It talks about the salary schedule summary, and it has all of those in the, the schedule and what that looks like. So this is kind of a good representation of the bottom line. So this one's in your packet as well.
Did you say how many people that includes?
What I'll do is I can go and get that printout that, that tells you who's in each job, if you'd like.
So, yeah, cause the million dollar increase for how many employees?
There's, and.
Is it in this packet or?
Well, it's not.
It's not a million dollar increase, if you would, um.
It's twenty-six thousand dollar increase over last year.
Oh, oh, and it says, but what's the cost for more movement, cost of schedule with movement, nine seventeen, nine hundred seventeen thousand?
That's the cost of the schedule with movement. That's the total cost of the new schedule with movement.
Oh, that's not an increase of, of nine hundred thousand.
No, the increase, additional funds needed to.
I thought it was.
See, right down there at the bottom, when.
Okay, that makes a huge difference.
Yes, it's twenty, it's twenty-six thousand dollars to, to modify this schedule.
I see, okay.
So this worksheet kind of goes through all of that and on here it has all of those, like the negative or additional funds needed. So this is a good representation, and I'll go grab that, um, chart.
I wanted to ask if it's online.
I can find it on there.
Not the.
It's right there. Right, in Madison.
Didn't even look.
It's gonna.
Sorry, go ahead, try.
The video's not on in here.
It's working. Just start with, start without your data.
Does anybody else have any questions about this? I thought it was the nine hundred.
Yeah, that's what made me.
Just confirm.
And I was like, I can't, I can't just say yes without understanding.
Inside your rain pearl and how all these spreadsheets and you're not.
Yeah.
Colors over here, just choose one.
So the additional funds is the twenty-six thousand across, I guess, just, I don't know how many employees. Does that, is that important to anybody else, to know how many employees this covers?
We can pull it up here a little bit, just.
Cause I don't want to delay, you know.
Smell, this mouse is a little sensitive.
Go, go to, oh, that one. It was classified, sorry.
Yeah, that's it. This one's just a classified on here. This is the classified P scale.
That's good.
What are you doing that? I can't.
Can you see it? Sorry.
Is it on this one, too?
No, but this is, this is what we're, that's not what we're looking for. It's, it's not on there. It's just has it classified. It doesn't have the, the lanes, cause that's in ours, so I'll grab that.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was.
And then, and then what is it? There's zero in lane four and no one in lane one and lane two, or column one and column two?
This is, um, general fund only. And so the lane four might have somebody from food service in there.
Okay, so, um, I had.
So I guess while we're waiting for a minute, if I could jump in. So again, just to take a step back a little bit, so remember that, you know, when we came back, the very first time we started talking budget, so the state is giving us extra money. And so, um, even back on the one that we've decided to table to get some more information, again, the state gave a seven percent increase for administrators. And so, and then Carl, you know, um, works on the spreadsheet and, and that's where we came back with the recommendation for three percent. Same thing with classified, even though it cost us, as, as you mentioned, on movement was nine hundred and seventeen thousand, well, the increase on the, from the state would cover all but twenty-six thousand of that. And so part of what we tabled, we'll go back to those original spreadsheets and just ha, and, and look at more details about, you know, the state giving us more money, um.
Based on percentage, but not based on the amount of money, just based on the percentage.
Yeah, yeah. And again, while we're even waiting, so to address your, uh.
But yes.
Trustee, Ms. Clark, is, again, I came from industry as well before schools. And so I think that's part of what you'll kind of get to see is school has these tiers and has movement. And, and so I think you'll, you'll see that they are pretty, uh, in, in range. And I actually, I'll, I'll be a hundred percent honest, when you started talking, I thought you were saying they're way too low. Because if somebody with a masters, you go to industry, I mean, you're six figures, I mean, the people that I deal with.
It depends on what, though.
It is, very true.
It's on what, I think, where.
But that, but we need to get there. There's a separation.
This is, this is so outside where our, the majority of our community sit.
Sure. And I can tell you what little school district, you know, little, what, eight hundred kids, you know, what they make for principals?
I know, I was just looking up because I got that.
And, and we can do, you know, that's what we can do. Just in compar, you know, because again, if people's the most important, we need to keep our best people, which I think we have a great team in my.
No, I hundred percent support you.
In ten, ten, ten weeks, or ten weeks, ten months of experience, we have a great team and we need to, sometimes we do pay, you know, slightly extra, but I'll think you'll, you'll see that it's not absorbently.
Yeah.
That you'll see. So anyway, so I think that's where, where Carl will, will look in there. So that's just my two cents.
This is being obnoxious.
From, from the new guy.
It's in here, but I can't get it to it.
Yeah, if you're comparing salaries, though, if you look, you know, and think that these are so high, if you look at, um, say, um.
I'm not suggesting they're so high, out of line.
I'm saying, but no, but there's a, a bunch of people over at the university that make, you know, and they're.
I looked up their salaries and they didn't look this high on the public record.
Well, I.
I know a professor that had a doctorate as of about, no, he retired ten years ago, it was sixty thousand.
I was offered a job over there, a part-time, half-time job. This was like, oh, two thousand, si, for forty thousand dollars.
Can you read that?
Half-time.
And, and, and I assume it, it's different based on your, um, field. So say you're in, teaching in the medical field.
Well, I was teaching, wouldn't have been teaching in social work.
In social, and then that's the social work, that's a different, would be a different, like, education professors are not on the same pay scale as, say, business, social work, medical, you know, they're not on the same.
I don't know.
Because of the demand, you know, cause they could get a better job out in the workforce. And so they have to, you know, get them in there. But, yeah.
We'll have that for you momentarily.
So I, I was close. It was, it's seventeen people total.
Right.
I'd say it's not a lot.
Oh, okay.
Man, I can't read that.
Do we have what we need for this function?
Is there any other question?
Yeah.
Which one are we on?
And the average salary for that is fifty-two thousand a year. There's seventeen people.
Seventeen people.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-two.
Oh, I don't get the total. I just said nine hundred.
Any other discussion? Are we okay? Um, so we have a motion, we have a second, right?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passed. Um. Okay, um.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so we got one more. Next on is, uh, to consider setting compensation levels for classified employees.
Oh, thank you. This is really, I really.
For the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year, is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board set the compensation levels for the classified employees for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year per the enclosed kinds and levels salary schedules as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion?
So can we walk through who these groups are? That's what I'm trying, so KLD?
Absolutely. I'll say, which one?
The top one, KLD. What does that stand for?
KLD or B?
KLD as in dog.
D as in dog.
So the very first.
That's student services, and that includes all of our aides. Now, what I was not able to do efficiently today was put who the, these levels are, who are, happens to be in them. So if you were to look down towards the end of that document, there's some salary schedules from a year ago, or for the current year, and it has all the classifications right below it.
So key.
So it was a.
That on page eleven?
Yeah.
And so for KLD, it has level one is our extended reading assistance, level two is after-school assistance.
Okay.
Level three instructional pair pros, media assistance in the elementary.
And, and that is the level, I'm gonna go back up to the top.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so the, that would be, so level ten would be, um, on that, the KLD. Um, level ten on both ways. The thirty-two, fifty-three an hour, what, who, who is that?
Community resource workers.
Community resource, so the police officers?
No, no.
She would.
Social workers.
Social workers.
Social workers, uh, okay.
And that would be a social worker with ten years of experience, though.
I see.
So.
That is not, because isn't that the same group, isn't that the same schedule as the pair pros? Or they're just in a different lane?
So what, what happened, I'm not sure, um, I think it'd be about seven years ago. Our community resource workers used to be qualified under pupil personnel services. And so that changed with the state, and so to put them on a comparable pay scale, they used to be on a teacher salary, and they used to be on the teacher pay scale, and then, um, we moved them to this.
Are certified.
Right.
Through the state social workers.
Correct. And so they, they've now been moved to this, um, to, to the classified salary schedule. And so that would be who those people would be.
I see, and that, that's that lane, that, that, is it the column going down, the level, or is it the step going across?
Level is the, is the position.
Okay.
The step down is years of experience.
I see, okay. I see, okay. And then, so then I, we can go back and look at the one through ten, and then it makes more sense. I don't see a ten on here, but I see to eight.
So, correct. Some, um, positions, there's not, when we, um, we did this last year, some levels, for example, there's not as many, um, categories in, so maybe they only have eight. Some of them have, do you know what I mean, they all vary.
Yes.
So we.
Can we combine or if we eliminate a position, it may move into the next level.
Okay, so one and.
So you can see some have ten, eight, six, just kind of depends.
So one, so like just a pair pro kind of would be nine, twenty-eight, and then the top would be ten, ten an hour. And then like a secretary would be, isn't that level four?
Well, there's a clerical schedule, so it'd be a KLC. So we, we, we broke this down a year ago.
On page two.
Just keep going down, you know.
Yeah, if you look at the pages at the bottom, it breaks them all.
Yeah, I keep trying to go back and forth, it's just.
And like I said, I didn't have time to make it pretty this afternoon to, to put all these classifications with the, uh, current, current schedule. So, uh, but a year ago, we broke them apart. They, they used to be in one big schedule. And what really brought this to a head was our technology folks were in this schedule that kind of limited to where we could give increases because our technology, uh, they're unique and, uh, sometimes we need to, to, um, reward that uniqueness with a little bit higher salary, but that.
We made some adjustments based on market rates.
Oh, well, yeah, the marker, they should be in an entirely different schedule.
And that's what we did. And so that's why, when we pulled them out, we did it with everybody. So food service is one, all the transportation is another, the clerical. Student services, which is everybody in a school is dealing with students. Uh, M and O, so our maintenance and, and that was another issue we had was try, we've, we spent years trying to hire an electrician. Because where they were placed on our kinds of levels chart, we either had to move everybody, and that would mean moving people who weren't electricians.
You necessarily have to move everybody.
Well.
On our old schedule.
On our old schedule, we.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say.
Cause they were, they were all in, in, they were all in the same lane. And so to, to be able to, to hire more based upon what the market is doing, we separated them out into these different categories so that we could do those adjustments without affecting large groups of people.
Right, right, cause an electrician is a completely different story than even a social worker.
But we were, but, yeah, but for instance, they were, they could have been on the same la, level on the old schedule, and to do that sort of thing was, was difficult. And so that's why we swapped, we did this little.
There's all these.
We, we separated them out. So there's gonna, there are going to be, uh,
Food service.
There's gonna be seven different schedules there. One based on food service, one on student services, M and O, bus transportation, um, trans, uh.
Head start is one.
Food service.
I saw that one.
Head start is another one.
That would be like the.
All over the board.
Pair pros, uh, in, anything along those lines.
Oh, the levels, basically the levels, but, but like the level ten, like you're saying, the social worker. Oh, the levels, basically, levels, but, but like, the level ten, like you're saying, the social worker, and that's the kind of thing. And counselors would, would they, they be also in that one?
No, 'cause they're pupil personnel, so they're paid on the, they're paid on the certified, and they're part of the negotiated agreement.
Got it, okay, I think I understand this now, I mean, does everybody else?
So these numbers represent the three percent?
The first five or six pages represent the difference between the previous year.
And where they are today.
So the.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
There, the ones that have the actual kinda greenish brown color, those are the new salary schedules. The ones with gray with all the classifications are last year, so if you wanna do homework or whatever you wanted, might wanna look back and compare. But the ones with the color, the actual color in them have, and as we mentioned, was this last week, three point?
Six.
We have this conversation, was it last week? It seems an eternity to go on, but, uh, the, the state put enough money in the base salary for classified employees that we could, and, we could increase them three point six five percent. And as I mentioned a week ago, this is the group of employees we're having the hardest time retaining.
And that's what, one other question is, do we need to shift any of this increase down to like the par, like the people that are paid the least amount, just because of?
And we're, we're having those conversations.
Um, but I don't wanna add to, it would just be a shift, you know, the, the bigger pay, you know, just because they're paying more at Wendy's, and it, you know, at all these places that suddenly, maybe that will change, maybe the market will correct.
And, um.
I mean, I don't see inflation going.
So are entry level positions for maintenance and food service, can we bump those up?
For like, and. More than?
Yes, we did.
More than?
They're not, they're not, they're not reflected in here, though.
Yeah, oh, okay, that needed to ask.
'Cause this is just across the board, right, but I'm just wondering, based on needing to hire those, do we need to increase those more than the rest of the schedules?
And we've had those conversations, and we might come back with you, to you to say, can we do this for these groups of employees? This particular food service.
Yeah, food service.
And, and our maintenance.
I mean, the people that are having to really.
Yes, they are the ones we are having the most difficulty retaining, and, uh.
Right.
And it basically goes back to what you just said, many of the places in town here are starting at twelve, thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour.
Right.
So we started kinda looking at that when we throw in benefits, that we put in insurance, and we put in Percy, and look at those differences, and it, it was really.
That would be like a part-time, though, would it?
I, I'm sorry, part-time, no.
Part-time parapros, right?
For example, though, we have a, a lot of full-time classified employees, and just looking at the difference on, I think Jonathan figured it at twelve dollars an hour, and if you did the insurance and Percy, it was about twenty-four, sixty-one.
I guess I'm looking at, like, I think it's a difficulty hiring part-time, right? Is that probably the, is that the most difficult, hiring the part-time, like, parapros, or is there a different place?
Parapros. I would say yes, to hire somebody who wants to come in and work three and a half hours a day will be challenging.
We usually find in the parapros, it's, it's, it's usually a, a mom or someone in the, um, schooled, school community that comes in, and so the parapros halftime, that seems to be kinda the norm that we find there. And then, but most of our parapros, we've started to realize, of course, with insurance and all of those things, if we can make them full-time, that that is the best way, most beneficial. And so, a lot of our paraprofessional positions, and especially personal care, just because they have those personal relationships with our special needs students, that those are almost always full-time. And so, in those positions, and of course, like our custodial, those would be full-time positions as well. Food services, again, the issue.
Or it would just be a difficulty in hiring the part-time.
And even with part-time, often there's a progression, you know, as Brenda said, we might pick up neighborhood folks who are already volunteering, then we just grab them for a part-time position.
Yeah, I mean, I could have been paying a lot for all this.
You know, a full-time offering with benefit, and so, yeah, we often see, again, that's sort of a natural progression.
So I'm trying to understand your comment, Carl, when you said, what do these numbers represent, it's the three percent, but you're, you're wanting to come back and ask for more?
Well, we've had this conversation just exactly.
Right, so why, I guess, why are we not having the conversation right now?
We, we, I thought we did raise it to three point six five.
Right, maybe it's just that having increased down to where it's most needed instead of across the board.
Well, just these two spots.
Jonathan wasn't here today, I couldn't.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, sometimes equity doesn't mean the same.
Same, exactly.
Sometimes, i- it means we have a higher demand here, or a higher need here, or something. So I guess that's all I'm saying, is that, is that three percent across the board, um, or could it be three and a half here and two and a half here? I mean, I, um, 'cause equity doesn't mean that everybody's getting the same thing, it means that we're in desperate need of this, so we have to pay more. Or this is more qualified, and they're getting paid more out in the, out in the rest of the, you know, any other job that they could get, so we have to pay them more.
So when you said the three point five, we actually unclassified, if you, on this paper, it shows that we raised those, everyone else is, um, this was, it should be in your packet, and this kinda gives the overall summary of where we are.
Last week?
Uh-huh, and it gives everyone, and it, it says that it, classified is three point six five percent, it's in your packet.
It's in the negotiated agreement at the very last page.
Oh, okay.
Page seven.
Is the summary of all the salaries.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was kinda an interesting point. Yeah.
So it just shows everything and kinda the bottom line, 'cause that's really hard to understand, all these numbers, and so the classified, we did, but, um, boost to three point six five, when others were at three percent across the board. And then also, J- Jonathan discussed that, kinda like you said, that there's some that are pretty hard to find in our custodial staff, we were looking at making an increase on custodial staff, and then, um, the other way we could do that is on our, um, assistant kitchen, assistant managers, they would just change a level, sometimes you can move people in the levels, and that will give you the increase that's needed, and so that of course comes out of another budget, which is out of the food service budget, and so those wouldn't come out of this amount.
So, yeah, I guess that's my only question, is should we be talking about what we're talking about, what Carl is, what we're talking about is more of an increase in one area than another? 'Cause I don't, I don't think that, you know, if there isn't a need as much in one area, and I, I'm fine with, you know, the pay raises and everything, I'm just saying, do we need to shift it at all to the places that we need or are more desperate?
And so we had that conversation, and we, through the coordinators, have identified two places, uh, and as we prepared the schedules today, we didn't have the final numbers for you on those two areas, again, which is food service, which is its own department, that does not come out of general fund, and then custodial, Jonathan, how many, do we have, about thirty-three?
Uh, yes, there's, I know it was right around fifty, fifty-two thousand dollars.
So on the custodial levels, we would increase, we would come back to the board and ask for an increase for that one out of general fund, but the other food service, um.
Is covered in the food service category, it's just not, would be needing to ask for more, um, next week or so?
Yeah.
Is what you're saying?
Yeah.
If, um.
So we would be above three point six five in those kind of areas that we feel are, uh, need a little more of an enhancement.
So it would look.
Potentially, you know, another, what was it?
Um, we raised, uh, I think.
So, is it about?
Seven percent.
Correct, it was, yeah, it was, I think it was seven nine cents, an additional seven nine cents.
An hour.
Okay, so do, um, so it would kinda be more like, these people get three percent, these people get four percent, like, I mean, it'd be more like that?
Yeah, three point six five minimum, and then up to.
And then, and then.
We'll just stretch it up seventy-five percent, even though I don't see it going that far.
Right.
To, you know, potentially four and a quarter or something, percent, yeah.
Okay.
How are you guys feeling about that, I mean, do we need to have all of that information before we approve this, or do we approve this and then get the additional?
We can still approve, we can still approve additional later, yeah.
Yeah, we would be.
And then increase the only certain salaries later, or do we need a shift?
For this, for this.
To kinda stay within the budget without dipping into the general fund?
Yeah, just in, I think there was.
So that's kinda the choice right here, right, is to shift the raises around here, or wait till next week, approve this, and then wait till next week, and then it would come out of.
You can approve this, and then we would do those three areas that we're most concerned about.
And that would be additional funds out of the general fund?
Only, maybe, that's thirty-three.
The three categories?
Right.
Right, I think I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody else?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passed, that concludes this meeting, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passed, this meeting is adjourned.